And the city council. So, you know, it's like I've been kind of aware of what a lot of, you know, the different departments in the city do. So Planning Commission is not new, but I have been reviewing projects at DRB for Bike and Ped for the last, not actually not even a year, but Kath- Kathy, Kathy and I had been doing that for some time. But yeah, I think I've lived in South Burlington now for thirty years. Incredible. And you know, so it's undergone a lot of change since I've been here. And you know, I know a lot of people in the development community, worked with a few, not, you know, not so much around here. Most of my work, you know, I'm a licensed architect, but most of my work involves lighting design and very little of it's actually right here. It's more in other parts of the state and even other states. But I'm sort of retired now, not completely. I'm still doing residential work. But I figured this, this kind of lets me A, spend more time traveling and B, you know, spend more time volunteering and more time gardening and more time actually working on my house. So, you know, so it's.
Donna also served on the, on the Wheeler Conservation Isment Task Force.
Right, well, and also.
And on the climate action.
And on the climate action.
A lot of work, a lot of volunteer.
And I just, so you know, I, I am actually on the Transportation Committee to, to review the Climate Action Plan. What are you referring to that as?
The implementation part.
Yeah, the transportation segment of the implementation plan. So I'm not letting go of the Bike and Ped Committee just yet. Yeah, because there's, there's a bunch of new people on there and I figured I'm helping transition into some of the stuff I was doing.
Okay, great. So you'll continue to serve on that for at least.
Yeah, for at least for the rest of the year.
That's great. Well, that sounds super, super good. I think, you know, it's really nice. We don't, we hadn't previously had someone, or at least our group doesn't have a, like anyone with the architecture background and, you know, all the work you've done with transportation and bike ped, I think is a really great asset that we're, I'm, I'm really excited about, so.
And I've, I've had to make my way through a few zoning ordinances too in my time.
Yes, and I mean, you've always had very impressive comments too. I mean, you clearly are paying attention and.
Yeah, when you look at it from the design side of things and you, you know, I mean, this side of things is, it's a little foreign because it's all language. It's, it's all words and you know, architects aren't, aren't ideally, you know, keen on reading a lot, but, so the civil engineers kind of keep, keep the architects in line as far as, as far as following zoning.
I will try. Yes.
At least for the zoning, zoning and, you know, stormwater and all that, almost those kinds of things. But, yeah, it's been a long career and many of you don't know, I actually worked at Green Mountain Power for eight years. So I have that side of planning and I was in the, two departments. I worked in the Efficiency Division, you know, the Efficiency Department, as well as I was a major accounts manager. So I worked with like State of Vermont, all the hospitals, you know, a lot of the housing authorities, number of the biggest school districts. So, you know, it kind of got me to know a lot about Vermont, considering I don't come from here. And, but I, I was just telling a friend today, it's like, because he was, he was trying to understand, it's like, why would a very small town need to have planning? You know, ordinances. And I was explaining it and I said, because you don't want it to become like New Jersey. Believe me, I lived in New Jersey. You don't want that, you don't want Vermont to become like New Jersey and it will without planning.
Yeah.
We have bookends here.
Yeah, I know. Well, I'm not from New Jersey. I'm from Western Pennsylvania, which plans even less than New Jersey did. So, you know, it's like the, you, you know, we've, we've suffered through the results of poor planning. Except the city of Pittsburgh, which Paul and I both were familiar with. Western Pennsylvania, city of Pittsburgh was, had a, had a very good planning department, actually.
Well, welcome. And I was going to welcome you, just I thought I had to stick to the agenda, which had it very, had it on the next item. Okay, I opened the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone joining us online have anything? Okay, then into announcements. Staff had put in there that the City Council adopted the LDR amendments along Shelburne Road. I attended remotely and Michael was there in person and the council thanked us very much for the, the, the recommendations and adopted without any changes and, you know, thanked us for our work. There were very few questions at the council level. I think they felt like we had thought through it really well. And, you know, I got the impression and maybe I made it up in my head, but they, that they were pleased that we were kind of, you know, moving through items, maybe a little quicker than we had in the past when we had just such large package that took a very long time to get through.
I thought you did a really nice job addressing Tom's question. I watched, I watched.
Oh, good, thanks. Yeah, yes, thank you. So I tried to, I tried to summarize what we're doing, but I had actually missed our hearing, so I did watch it by video before going because I didn't want to misrepresent how the hearing had gone. Good. Any other announcements? Paul, anything?
I've got a couple of things. If, one is, you're probably all already aware of this, but this Friday night and Saturday night, four to eight PM, illuminate Vermont, Vermont's going to be a really fun event, indoor, outdoor, music, crafts, activities, beverages, adult and not. Should be a lot of fun. This block between the entrance to the school and Mary Street will be closed down entirely. So that's why you've got the signs at either end of Market Street, so that the vendors can be spread out and it's going to be a really, really neat, unique, and it's the first true celebrate that we have the beginnings of a downtown event. So please come to tell everybody about it and have a great time.
They're desperate and need desperately need volunteers to help. And if you, any of you would like to do so, you should either, you could contact Elona or Penny Tompkins.
Great, thank you, Michael. And then the second thing I wanted to do, if I could just take two minutes, I don't, just want to give you a quick update on what our city manager has presented to the council as budget, because I think it relates to you all, so I'll just super quickly, if that's okay. So the budget season has begun with council. At their last meeting, city manager presented the sort of big picture of it and then the city manager's budget, which includes basically the third floor, including us. Recreation and libraries also presented and now for the next couple of meetings, it's going to be Public Works, Fire and, and Police. Included in, in next year's budget is additional staffing in the Planning and Zoning Department that has previously been authorized by the city manager and by council. So it's not a new add. It was, it's going to actually start in this fiscal year for an additional person on the planning side and an additional person on the development review side, which we're very excited to be able to support and really help advance all this great work in this community. The part that I wanted to speak about that's to next year's budget as proposed. Jesse spoke to the budget sort of in three categories. Baseline budget to maintain what we currently have in terms of services and staffing. Capacity building budget, so recognizing that we're a growing community, how do we address some of the growth needs that have happened as we have, you know, more people, we have more fire calls, as we have more roads, we have more roads to plow, et cetera, and then, you know, take that same thing to all the various different needs. And then a third piece of it, propose funding to specifically implement the Climate Action Plan. So, I'm not going to, this is all online and I'm happy to send you a link. I'll just very quickly go through it. The baseline budget to maintain current operations has a estimated about 2.93% increase in the budget to just do exactly what we do today, based on all the various different cost factors that go into that. So that's sort of the, the, where we're at if we change nothing in the community.
Oh, just, is that a, okay, is that a 3% increase to the expenses or a 3% increase to the tax?
In the tax rate.
Because if the base has, has the tax base grown?
The tax base has grown. It is estimated to be growing by about one and a half percent this year, which is a robust number.
That would imply that the budget is up four and a half percent, right?
Uh, yes, essentially. So the numbers are up above it there. So in terms of.
I see.
The general fund.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Yeah. So those are things like healthcare, cost of goods, the bargaining units, et cetera, so.
Oh, so the 4.94 is enough. So the budget's up 5% implies a 3% increase in tax rate?
Okay, correct. The, the second stage of what she discussed, and I'm sorry that this is a slightly hidden, see if I can move it a little bit. Now it's really bad with me. I'm hidden there. So this is the city manager's proposal for capacity increases. So this is to address, oops, trying to have that not blocked by.
That black sidebar thing you connection.
Problem is it's up there, so I gotta go up to that other room to.
I see.
There we go. All right, close enough. So these are some identified needs that the leadership team had worked on and our city manager is proposing that some of them be funded in this coming fiscal year and then some be in the following fiscal year. So, and there was a lot of slides that went into this before, but for example, we've not added any highway people in the last fifteen years and yet we have about twenty additional miles of roadway than we had back at that time. A huge proportion of our ambulance calls are being taken by mutual aid. So we, we are recipients multiple times over of what we are sending out, which is a not long-term sustainable situation. The parks maintenance has become, you know, important as we get more parks online. Restoring certain police positions in police and fire and then one that the city manager is very excited about of bringing in a geographic informations slash data analyst. So we collect so much data now as a community, but we don't have a person who can be synthesizing that and helping us make good decisions from it. So that's part two. And then part three, the budget here is a proposed approach to addressing the implementing the Climate Action Plan. And so the city manager has proposed sort of a three-year phase approach to this, which would include in fiscal year twenty-four, bringing in a climate director, technical planner, a sustainable, sustainable community engagement manager, consulting, funding, public outreach, funding, and then increasing that into future years, including enforcement team, et cetera. So, you're invited and welcome to be in touch with the council on your thoughts on this as, as individuals. The numbers are not insignificant. As Andrew pointed out, it's 3% at the baseline. It is with the added, it brings it to total of about 5.75. And then the climate for this year is another 2% on top of that. That's a significant lift and so your thoughts and priorities would be as individuals, I'm sure, very welcome by the council as to how to wrestle with these big challenging numbers to address really important subjects in our community. So that was my quick little.
Question about the three levels, like would, like, does the city manager picture there being kind of like, like the public weighing in on kind of three levels or is the council gonna?
I think it was more of a.
To put forward to the voters?
No, the proposal is all three. So this is really, I think what the city manager was trying to do was to frame it out for council in a way that, that describes, here's what it is to just maintain what we have. What we have is as we grow as a community, sliding backwards a little bit. So here's a plan to keep up with. And then here's this new element that is not historically been part of what we do in South Burlington to really sort of have a significant focus on climate action and so be able to see that as its own, its own area of new policy, just as though we were standing up a library for the first time or setting up a fire department for the first time. It's sort of, it's, it, it was helpful, city manager felt to describe where, what the sources of these, these proposed funding comes from.
Hey, Paul, just, this is maybe a little bit tangent, but I'm wondering whether it would make sense or how this compares to the conclusions in, in the Stewart Report, where I remember the, I remember the conclusion being that they'd be economies of scale as the community expanded because the existing infrastructure is kind of accommodate the expanding need for services and therefore new development should reduce, should raise more revenues than, right, the services cost to, this, this would kind of seem to indicate, no, that the economy scale really aren't there and you need to keep building out as the community grows.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would encourage anybody who's not had a chance to watch a video by the name, by, by a gentleman by the name of Joe Minicozzi, who does this really incredible sort of economics of development. And also recognize that it, it, it probably depends on the form development. You know, if you're adding a building on Market Street that's already been built, then there's no more plow work, but there is still potentially additional ambulance calls because it's more people. It, it all sort of shapes the former development and you know, what we're hearing and Kelsey could probably speak to this more, but there's also just unrelated to development pressures. So there's, you know, our fire department is doing a huge number of calls related to social service needs that are a nationwide issue that did not exist at the same level and it's in, in, in past years and that's just something that every community is wrestling, but, but, yeah.
Yeah, or, or like deferred maintenance. You know, I think one of the things you said was twenty miles of new road, but without expanding like the highway crew. Like, you know, that's, it's kind of like, maybe we should have expanded the highway crew by one person ten years ago or something, you know, it's just.
Yeah.
Little incremental stuff.
I think we're still trying to recover from 2008 and then COVID. I mean, we weren't able to, to hire the people we needed. And we're behind. So it's catching up with us, but your point about Minicozzi is important because he pointed out how much more tax revenue a commercial building, a multi-story commercial building produces compared to residential. I think that was a big takeaway for me from viewing that video. Maybe you, we could show it together, have, have us see it as a commission. It was screened at the brewery.
Yep, and we screened it at Magic Cat. Yeah, it's a great idea. That's what I've got as announcements.
Okay, any other announcements or? Great, we can move on to item five, which is updates the environmental sections of the LDRs. So this was previewed a little bit to us in July. And it's back with the details.
Sure, yeah. So this is the technical, the technical amendments and corrections to the LDRs that are fixing some of the issues that have come up since the IZ amendments were adopted. Unintended consequence, unintended or unanticipated consequences of how the new LDRs were written. We've gone through and corrected some of them. I guess it's, it's mostly to deal with some of the existing neighborhoods and their interactions with the Article 12 natural resource buffers and fixing the current LDRs to be more in line with, with resident expectations and the lot lines and layout of neighborhoods around existing buffers when they were created.
Okay, any, I guess, questions?
Yes. Some question of information for me under D, 1201D. Which would provide us, or would provide the more comprehensive protection against encroachments? Site plan review by the DRB or subdivision and, and or planned unit development review procedures, which would be the more robust or comprehensive way of doing it?
You just said 1201D?
D.
So you're, you're talking about a section that wasn't changed, like you're.
Yep.
Page two.
No, I think Michael's referring to the D on the Sorry. bottom of page thirty-six in the packet.
Okay, yeah, I was on the wrong page.
So I guess, Michael, I, I guess the answer is that they are different processes depending on the type of application. So a subdivision is a, is when land is being physically divided in, in its ownership. A PUD is, lives somewhere between a subdivision and a site plan and a site plan is development of a parcel with a building. So oftentimes something will be both a subdivision and then a site plan or they would merge it into being a PUD where there's a little bit of guided flexibility in the regulations as you, as you've adopted. But it's really each is a process and from the environmental protection standards, they, they're essentially the same. The only big distinction between them is that at the time of subdivision, when landlines are being drawn, that's the time when a natural resource like a wetland would be separated into being on its own parcel. Because that's when lines are being drawn. That's the only time that lines are newly being drawn. Otherwise, the applicability of the rules for environmental standards are
The same.
Is the same.
And just for clarification, if we're, if we're looking at D sub one, that is just a restructuring of the language that was already there. The language under D with no sub number that is now cross-stricken through was just sort of reorganized and placed as number one for readability and structure of this, of that section. That's not language that I added to make any correction.
Okay. So I should be comfortable with, with the review procedures of, under the planned unit development rules.
They're different processes, but they would have the same standards. The changes in D were under two, three and four.
We just go back and just want to understand the concerns that were raised in connection with the hundred-foot buffer for wetlands and existing dwellings, because I, I recall a call is talking about a narrow, a narrower fix, something, you know, we were talking about if it encroaches the foundation or, and we possibly make an exception for raised deck. I don't, could, could we just go back and review what the concerns were that led to this fix?
Do you want to start? And I'll pick it up or do you want me to start?
Why don't you start and then I'll.
So the, thank you, Andrew. So the, the concerns that were raised were we, over the course of the spring and summer, probably plus or minus a dozen properties came in. Most of them for things like deck expansions. I think we had one or two where there was a shed, that kind of thing. And the overwhelming majority of them, but not all of them, had a circumstance where the property had been placed, had been laid out way back when with the wetlands having been put onto a separate parcel and then the, and, and their buffer, their fifty-foot buffer, and then the backyard was the backyard of the house. Functionally, prior to the adoption of these regulations, we, if somebody chose to submit an application to do something on their property, our assumption was that if it was on a lot in a subdivision, that the, it had already been, the wetlands had already been excluded. So we did not look at wetlands as an issue at all. We looked at setbacks, heights, et cetera, but that's it. With the expanded wetland buffer to a hundred feet, that made it so that administratively, we needed to look where the wetland was. And so that would lead to identifying that the fifty feet was perhaps just off the back of the property, add another fifty feet and that could become some of the backyard, all of the backyard, the entire property could be conceivably in the wetland. And the only, sorry, in the wetland buffer, excuse me. And the remedy for an applicant would be to demonstrate to us that either A, we were incorrect and there was not a wetland, that maybe it had been, it had shrunk over time, it's possible, which would require them to go through a whole wetland review. Or to submit an application to the DRB for the very narrow exceptions that exist, but in order for the DRB to see it, it has to be measured, field identified and, and then possibly grant an exception, but that's a multi-thousands of dollars cost to do that. We identified, while we were looking at a couple of the cases here, we identified some circumstances where there are unbuilt lots immediately adjacent to lots that do exist where the, the lot was laid out as a single-family home lot, but there's not been a home placed on it yet. That is, what's an interesting question as to what happens if the entirety of a lot that was laid out is now in the additional fifty-foot buffer? And that's sort of what led to the discussion. The commission did discuss what could be some narrow exceptions. We bounced it around a lot amongst our team and wanted to see what you would think about this language, but ultimately it's your language and you, for you ultimately decide, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess there, I mean, there's a lot of new stuff in Oracle 12, right? There's habitat blocks, there's there's all kinds of things, connectors that will cause people to maybe do things different than they had to do before because we felt that they were important protections. I mean, I can imagine, you know, half acre is, is pretty big, right? It could be a hundred feet wide by two hundred feet deep. That's, that's a lot of area. And if the back of that area now is in a wetland buffer, do we want him building back there? I, 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 I recall the conversation around that being different than reflected here, I guess.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm thinking of. Yeah, that, that's, and I, I, I thought that we had decided that in an incident like that, the pre-existing was okay. Just, you know, to me, the new buffer coming onboard, the people have already been living there, it's a pre-existing lot. To me, that, that seems a little onerous. Especially if it's a pre-existing lot. If it's new construction, no problem with it, but if it's, you know, Butler Farms, the house has been there for thirty years.
I had not, not thinking about what Andrew said. I had thought about this as well, that we're talking about a lot that encroaches into the hundred-foot.
And so I I made my own language, if you like, that was, you know, for lots less than half an acre existing before that date. That encroaches into the hundred foot class two wetland buffer area, then the buffer area shall be the horizontal distance from the boundary of the of the wetland to the boundary of the of the encroaching lot or to the if it's not, it could be to the point where the encroaching structure or shed or deck finds itself, because we could save, in some cases, it may be fifty feet. But in other cases, it may be sixty or seventy or eighty feet. And therefore, we could save that part of the hundred foot buffer. If you, if you're following me.
Not sure that does anything. So I I would need a diagram.
Assuming that the the lot is now within the hundred foot, the lot line is within the hundred foot buffer. But we don't know where exactly. It may be only at fifty feet, but it may be further away, further out from this wetland. Then that's the place where we should draw the the new boundary of the buffer. Not necessarily fifty feet, but where it intersects with either the encroachment or the lot line.
So, Michael, I brought up an Michael, I brought up an example here. This is Haymaker Lane here in Bay Crest. So the green here is our approximate understanding of the wetland plus its hundred foot buffer. We may be off by a little bit, and this one has an added layer of complexity that it was a class three wetland, but it's likely a class two wetland now, but let's just pretend it was a class two. So this was one of the houses that we were looking at that had that had approached us. So in what you're suggesting is that let's say this seventy five feet, let's say the the wetland ended here and seventy five feet brought you to here.
Yep.
You'd get the exemption for the remaining twenty five feet, but nothing in this area here on the common land.
Yeah.
And then this was an example here of there's not a house existing on this lot yet, but it was laid out with the intent of being a a single family home, and it's essentially not a built block if the wetland fully applies on that property today.
So.
Wetland buffer fully applies.
You're saying they, from their property line, they would get the exemption, whatever that distance is.
Yeah.
Oh, that seems very reasonable. You're right, it doesn't seem like they should have an exemption out in the actual.
Yeah, no, no, I'm fine with that.
They wouldn't need an exemption beyond their property lines, I'm not sure that has any impact, right? They can't build outside their property line, anyway.
Well, maybe, maybe if it's somehow common land that they would be able to team up and start mowing back there or something. I mean, I don't know, I mean, if.
Not in a wetland buffer.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying what your suggestion seems very reasonable.
To the lot.
Though I think we're saying you wouldn't need to do it, you could just use the language written in here, maybe.
Has an impact, but.
Instead of fifty feet, the lot line, which could be more than fifty feet from the wetland.
Ted, you were trying to say something.
No, I was like wanting to have an example, I was thinking Ethan Allen, states, but this is, this is better. I think I might as well.
This is Vale Drive and so that there's another example of the same kind of thing.
So so you're suggesting basically, like, take that language that's written in here, D, for lots less than point five acres existing, blah, blah, blah. Just have the exemption only apply on the subject parcel, like lot. Like within the boundaries of the lot. Okay, does anyone have any issues with that, or do you see a technical issue with? I mean, you're.
I mean, if the entire property is in the in is in the new buffer.
Would you, would you still want it to be maintaining the fifty foot buffer? Like hypothetically, the class two wetland could be thirty feet from the property line.
It could be.
So you'd want the exemption to be the lot line, even if it's thirty feet, even if it's less than the original fifty?
Can you, can you draw it in within the lot, within the property? It's a property owner has the rights.
The thing about wetlands is that they they do move occasionally. So it's it's possible that the wetlands as mapped when the subdivision was laid out are not exactly within the foot from where they are mapped currently. So there is a possibility that we're using the lot line. This is just a question, there's possibly using the lot line, you you could end up with less than fifty feet.
You could. And surely, we we couldn't, in fact, expect a property owner to give up twenty feet of his property.
Right, and I think I think importantly, just from a from an administrative perspective, the if what Michael is proposing would would, I think, work in what I'm about to say, but it it would be very helpful to not be in a situation where a homeowner has to prove that there's not a wetman in their backyard. Because that instantly takes a five hundred dollar project and makes it a six thousand dollar project plus from a staff administration time analyzing that takes a twenty minute project and makes it a two day project. So those are very, very like multiples of work on everybody's hands.
Is anyone on the commission suggesting that we would require a homeowner to do a wetland delineation as part of this? Because I think that was one of the things we talked about, how we were hoping that, you know, for like a shed, a homeowner wouldn't need to do the delineation.
Existing lots. Lots.
Existing lots
Under half.
laid out to be like approved as house lots.
Yep.
So something that they can demonstrate that there was a subdivision approval with the intent of a house going there.
Well, we we made the regulations, I'm assuming that if there was a delineation required, the city would have to do it. Comes right off your budget.
Oh, you're so silly over there sometimes.
No, there was a serious comment about the city having to do it, we wouldn't expect a landowner, a property owner to have to do it.
So I think that that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure that when we were talking about this, no one was saying the landowner needs to do delineation. So I just wanted.
I think I remember that we we talked about consistency in that we're not suddenly, you know, placing some new onerous burden on a landlord who wants to put a shed on the end of their property. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Okay, any other questions about that part? I did have a question about one of the other parts.
Just, we we say, um, do we mean for a lot that's empty now, that it had to be approved for a single family or two family dwelling as of November tenth, two thousand twenty one?
Approved as a lot for a single family or two family dwelling. So when these subdivisions were laid out, they were approved for certain types of development under certain standards for different sizes of uses. So you wouldn't have to have an approved like house plan that you were planning to build, but it would be in the subdivision where the lot was intended to be on an approved subdivision plan where the lot was intended to be single family or two family dwelling.
The actual incidences of this are very, very few. There are, we found the one on Haymaker, we could probably find maybe
I think there were two at Butler Farms?
Less than ten total lots that would be fall into that criteria in the city.
Okay, anything else on that piece?
I have some, but I think it's, I should rather come back to it, because while we're in the process of making amendments here, I'd like to come back to some improvements that we could make elsewhere. And align align the city center and commercial industrial zone with the residential zone, because one's fifty and the other's a hundred. And I don't know whether there's a good reason for it. I can't remember why we did it. But I think we should, while we're about to try to improve these environmental protection standards, chapter twelve, we might be able to make those improvements, provide better and bigger buffers where we can. But we can come back to it at another time, if you like.
Okay, Ted?
A quick question on twelve oh two E subsection. Let me see here. Because it would be C. One of the questions I had was, I I forget what the the deficit is, the requirements of restriction will cause unnecessary extraordinary economic hardships. What, how do we define that? I mean, hardships for one, maybe not for the other. We, do we have a?
So this isn't a section that was not.
You know, under street traffic crossings, not on official map. I mean, I.
I think that's a good question, Ted. Honestly, we have not had an application under this. We don't have a specific term for that. What makes staff somewhat comfortable with the discretion that exists there is that all of those must be met together. So I think it was an acknowledgement that it can't, that that it has to be all of those and I demonstrated that that this is an economic hardship. So if it were the only standard, I would have some really big concerns, but given that it's one of a whole group, there's some discretion and latitude for the board to determine what that means, but that in and of itself doesn't grant you an okay. It's that and everything else.
Great, thanks.
But, you know, we're open to ideas if you've got a specific metric that you can help us with. It's, you know, it's not an area that we've
I don't have.
employ elsewhere in our rules, so it's really trying to be a set a slightly higher bar than otherwise.
Yeah. Well, on that, I didn't have any questions on that section, but I definitely had some question on the steep slopes sections.
Okay, were we done with the wetland part for now?
If we're done with the other section.
Okay.
Mine is also about steep slopes, but it's something else.
You know, because I think mostly the distinction here is existing steep slopes versus new steep slopes. Question I had was mostly how how the existing regulations deal with steep slopes, vegetation, ledge and things like that in a in a PUD situation. And I, you know, because I haven't been around, you know, through all of this yet, but I did, I do have questions on some of the, you know, some of the development reviews that seem to drive, seems, I'm not sure what's driving developers to do this, but to try to flatten out sites, you know, and remove all of the natural well, the ledge, you know, exposed ledge, exposed vegetation and things like that. They just want to wipe it all out. And it seems to me that that's the wrong approach. That you need to, you need to have developments that work with the existing contours much more, and that's also a climate issue. You know, because you're putting an awful lot of resources into try to make something developable that probably shouldn't be developed. And one of the, I mean, this is an existing neighborhood now, but I remember when Songbird Lane was put in, and there was a beautiful, just a beautiful ravine that went through that, and it virtually was wiped out. You know, it was paved, you know, it was a big gully, but you know, a ravine was turned into basically a pipe in a in a stormwater retention pond. I mean, it just is very upsetting that, you know, and there could have been a lot of development there without destroying that. And I wonder why our regulations, you know, even on a smaller scale, you know, on Park Road, you know, there's a there's a ledge with, you know, it's a, it's a not, I wouldn't call it forested, but you know, it's a vegetated ledge, and there was no need to touch that. Why, why did they decide that they had to bulldoze everything to make that site developable? It just didn't make any sense to me. And are regulations letting developers and even encouraging them to do stuff like that?
I think this this is new, so the steep slope standard and very steep slope standard is new. And I think it's partially in response to what you're seeing, like people developing on ledge and like kind of regrading sites in ways that may or may not cause a lot of erosion and unstable slopes.
A lot of explosives, you know.
Yeah, so this, so I think the gully example on Songbird, they probably wouldn't have been able to do that with with this new standard in place, is that?
I'm I'm not convinced. There were two people at the Act two fifty hearings for that development. There was myself and Sarah Dop, and the developer had five economists, two agronomists, one ornithologist, a wildlife expert, three or four soil experts, all giving testimony. So it it came down to the power that the developer was able to bring to bear, because he has an income stream down the road, whereas other people did not. I'm very familiar with this forty five acre lot. I mean, this forty five acre piece of land, it was the last wildlife refuge between the city proper and the golf course. And as Donna has eloquently described, it was destroyed. There were some little jokes. There's a, there's a wetland about the size of of this room with the road all the way around it. So nothing can live there. But it does bring me to something that's on this section, which is under the steep slopes. Item C reads clearing of vegetation excavation and filling on steep slopes shall be minimized. That's, that's a loophole. The kind of thing that Donna was referring to, and that should be prohibited. We shouldn't be messing with with steep slopes like that.
So just as a point of clarification, anything in black, I did not change.
No, I want to change.
See, yeah, this is, these are things that you're saying to change.
Yeah.
Proactively, this is not something that, this is something that was adopted in the IZ process. It's not something to that has been drafted to be changed now.
Absolutely. No, I understand that, then, for your benefit, a couple of grammatical or whatevers in where you talk about on approved site plan. I think it's either on an approved site plan or on approved site plans or other permit document documentation are accepted or excluded, that's under B applicability. And a few other places where that sentence or the group of words appears, an approved site plan or approved site plans.
Oded, thank you.
Got it? Did you find what I'm?
Yep, straight up on the screen.
Okay, and then my last question on this section, which is the under the review process, I don't know what is meant by small in size or minimum distance from other. And I don't know if anybody does, but we probably have to define that if we want this to apply. In.
So you're looking at the last sentence in D?
Yep.
Right, so that was written as an attempt to give the DRB or administrative offer some discretion to make those determinations and not be as prescriptive about what is de minimis. They would have to be making a, making a decision that something was de minimis because of the size and isolation. Otherwise, it's it's, we were trying to, we were trying to figure out a way to define how small something has to be, how isolated something has to be to not require this review. Because you may have a five degree slope that has a little divot in it that happens to be thirty degrees for four feet. And does that prevent, do they have to, as you said, you know, draw draw a line around it? When they're doing a road around a wetland, do you have to sort of isolate this four foot by four foot section? Or is that something that in the greater scheme is only a
Or is that something that in the greater scheme is only a five degree slope? So this was an attempt to write that into the regulations that give um, the D R B or administrative officer some discretion to determine that something is too small and or too isolated. To be required to meet these standards, um, because we can't anticipate every situation that may come up. We may, we may say it has to be a drop of three feet and something is a drop of three point two feet and it becomes regulated. So without having to draw those lines because we don't know exactly what would be coming up, we tried to give it to the D R B as a bit of discretion.
Okay, I only, I raised it for that very reason because the D R B has indicated to us many times that they don't want discretion, that one thing's cut and dried, but I understand in this case, that's not that easy.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand the intent of, of the regulating steep slopes unless you know, it's basically for soil stability, it's for stabilizing of a slope. Is that the main intent? Because the other issue that kind of comes in there is when you have a steep slope, it often is vegetated. And So the, the regulations on steep slope development were all adopted as part of the I Z process. So these are things that have, are not changing in this this bit of editing.
But, but yes, Donna, that is correct. It is about slope stabilization is the primary goal.
Yeah.
That very steep slopes over twenty-five percent are likely hazardous conditions. And that ones between fifteen and twenty-five percent are not no build areas, but they require a higher level of attention and stop slope stability analysis by an applicant.
And so this is, this is proposed development with slopes of greater than twenty-five percent.
Proposed developments where the pre-existing natural slope is of that steepness. It's not about the, if, if for whatever, yeah, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs in that step, in that, in my statement there, but it's where the pre-existing condition is a steep or very steep slope. And the proposed change here is that there are occasionally times when the pre-existing condition is a human-built environment. And that we were proposing to exempt. So the Maple Leaf Motel on Shelburne Road has a really steep embankment down to the uh, Hanaford former Kmart Plaza. If ever that's redeveloped, that was entirely human constructed. There's nothing, you know, frankly, it would be probably better to do something different than maintaining that slope because it's, you know, somebody forty-five years ago thought that was a good idea. So that's what this change is supposed to do is to clarify that uh, if it's human created on a plan that we can document, so it's not human created three hundred years ago, it's human created in recent history, then that's not, that's not the same circumstance.
So Jessica, how do, how do we get uh, my request that we amend what the existing wording on um, steep slopes? Item C, which talks about clearing of vegetation, excavation and filling, rather than be minim- minimized, shall be prohibited. And how would, how could I get that on the list? Do I need, do we need a motion?
Um, well, you know, it actually did read that way, maybe like in our draft. And then I think it might have been Ted and maybe some others who had felt like that category of steepness didn't necessarily need to be a prohibition, but there needed to be standards in place to make sure that there was you know, no erosion that was going to happen. It was going to be restabilized and, you know, so that, that was the discussion of why it wound up with that language because we put in place that um, like the standards for the stability and erosion analysis. So, so that's how it wound up being, the way it's written now.
Being, shall be minimized?
Yeah, instead of saying pro- prohibited, it's, it has the
I, I, I'm, I think about the hillside development between Old Farm Road and Kimball Avenue, that entire area, the entire topography has been changed. If you've been watched, if you've watched what's happened there over the last few years, uh, the, the, the topography is nothing like it was in its natural state. And um, I'm not sure whether that was done. I don't know. I'm not even sure that it was legal, but it's, that's not the issue now. Uh, I'm looking to the future. So we don't see that kind of thing. Where it was excavated and filled and completely changed. So that's why I'm asking for that.
Um, well.
To be added to the, to these amendments.
Ted, I know you had kind of champion taking that out of there, you know, when we wrote these. Then we ultimately didn't have the prohibition.
So you want that removed? Is that sort of what you're
I'm saying, instead of shall be minimized, shall be prohibited. The excavation and clearing of vegetation and filling in of steep slopes.
Some
Steep slopes meaning twenty-five.
Well, just to be clear, steep slopes means fifteen to twenty-five percent. Very steep slopes is over twenty-five. So just to be clear on that.
And I mean, not to put only Ted on the, on the, I mean, we had also had, um, you know, people give examples of some different types of development that did make sense on that, that, that category of steepness where maybe you have a walkout a walkout floor on back.
Sure.
I mean, there are ways that you can develop.
Like to, shall be minimized. I, I wasn't here for the discussion. So like, against what standard is that tested, minimized to extent reasonably necessary to like, how would, what's it tested against? Would, would the hillside example that Michael is articulating be permissible if the developer says, well, it was the only way to make development. I, I tried to minimize it, but I couldn't like what, what what's it tested against?
Yeah, it's a good question. I guess I picture it being like the opposite of what Michael and Donna brought up. Like you wouldn't just be like wholesale bulldozing all over, but if you in a planned way had maybe some units that had a walkout basement so that the part of the house was on an upper level and part of it was below and you really very carefully kind of did your construction so that you didn't have wholesale bulldozing, but I, I don't know. I mean, I guess I don't have an exact, exact example, but
How about terracing? Would terracing be permissible?
Yeah, I mean, Paul or
I, I think that the chat, that, that it would depend on the scale of what is being proposed for development. So if somebody had a six acre parcel and they're putting a single home on it and were crossing a steep slope with a driveway, then we would say, you know, other than the area where you're crossing with the driveway, that should be left in a very natural condition. If it's a circumstance where the zoning allows for and encourages, you know, a large amount of development, then I think it, it would be a, a tool in the toolbox to assess the uh, design of the neighborhood to minimize, but it's minimize doesn't mean prohibit. Minimize means you know, limit unnecessarily, doing it unnecessarily.
I mean, is it likely that, that uh, somebody would have a parcel where the entire parcel is a steep slope?
We do have a couple that have, um, one, one that I'm thinking of that somebody, that the property owner has come in and off, talked to us about what their options are. Off Corey Hill Road where it's, it's uh, entirely either steep or very steep slopes. So, um, it would minimizing it as we discussed to them would be first, they can't touch the very steep slopes. And then secondly, if they're going to be putting more than one home on it, uh, to be, uh, looking to first what the most uh, stable circumstance would be. Uh, if it was, let's say, going to be two homes, sharing a driveway would be uh, limiting, would, would be minimizing, but it's not at least as written in our view, a prohibition on development. It's a how do you minimize it as you're, as you're reasonably doing the development that otherwise is permitted by the regulations?
Well, I mean, the way really steep lots get built on everywhere except apparently here is you do pole construction. You know, you don't put in concrete foundations um, for, you can, you can build structures that are not, you know, that are attached to the ground by columns. Basically, you know, they have uh, pole type construction is what it's called. You know, they put drive, um, pot, drive piles into the ground and and the, the levels are supported above grade, you know, they can park underneath. They often will fill in with you know, garage space or util, you know, not really utility spaces, but you know, um, these houses, it, homes like this and buildings like this exist everywhere. Um, and so it, it, it seems like it's not really dealt with in the regulations that, you know, you, you don't have to excavate an entire site to build a building on it. You can basically drive, you know, you can drive your footing, so you can drive piles. Um, now this is what they did all, San Francisco entirely is built like this, you know, because there is nothing, it basically San Francisco is built on soup. Um, you know, so they have to drive piles all the way down to rock to support buildings. Well, you don't have to do, well, we have plenty of rock, but you know, basically you can, you can, you can have a structure that is open underneath or it's, it doesn't have a, you know, it doesn't have a, um, a full found, a full basement. And that's how you build on steep slopes and that's a very environmentally you know, less damaging way of building on a steep slope because you don't have to excavate that much.
Whole construction is also would avoid all the blasting of ledge that we're doing here, which is completely changing the geology of wherever they're doing it. You can do pole construction there too with them. You wouldn't need to blast all the ledge out and then cart it away somewhere to a landfill.
Yeah, it's becoming, it's becoming more common in many parts of the country too because um, mass timber construction or just timber construction, i.e. post and beam type construction uses a lot more carbon-based materials and it's more environmentally um, it's more, more carbon storing. Um, and so, I mean, it's being pushed. Obviously, it's a, it's a little more expensive way to build. Um, so the developers won't like it, but um, it is, it is a way to do something with a piece of land that otherwise can't be built on. And architects are kind of known for built, buying these really cheap lots because nobody thinks anything can be built on it. And then they'll build a structure that's kind of, you know, has a bridge going, kind of going across to it and has this gorgeous view and it's in the trees. But they haven't had to destroy anything, you know, really to put it there, maybe a couple of trees.
Well, it sounds like that falls into the category of minimized, you know, you're minimizing excavation and filling, so.
I think if I remember one of our numerous discussions about this, I think that because we do allow development on steep slopes is why we did not, we got rid of the word prohibit there. If you read the sentence above it, read B and then read C, they kind of go together.
The, the sentence above it is the same issue, but
Yeah.
Want to pick on them both at the same time.
Okay, well, I guess the question is, um, does, does anyone else uh, want to go with Michael's suggestion of prohibiting on the fifteen to twenty-five percent slopes?
Is that the clearing of vegetation or is that the
It would be prohibiting all development, I think is what he's
I don't think you should prohibit it. You know, I, I think, I think you have to you have to acknowledge that there are ways it can be done properly.
You'd have to do it without clearing, you know, without cutting down all the trees and, and doing major excavation or doing excavation and filling. In other words, use the, use the land as it is. Don't change it.
As your impact.
You know, site.
Yeah, low impact development.
Yeah.
You need a, you need a section on low impact development and how to do it.
I've, I've, I've seen it done because I'm the poor guy who had to hold the staff when the site was surveyed. My father surveyed all his own all the parcels for which he designed buildings. And uh, he didn't want them, I won't use the term he did, but he didn't want them stuffed onto the landscape. He wanted them to merge with the landscape. So it didn't, you, you can do it without, without clearing all the vegetation and excavating and filling. You can use, as Donna has pointed out, you can use the steep slope as it is, you can develop it as it is without destroying its nature.
Okay, I think what you're describing is the way that it's written though. I mean, maybe I'm playing devil's advocate here, but like you know, by saying, okay, you could put some things there that fit by minim- and minimizing clearing, filling, bulldozing, you know, I, I think that that's what this says already. You know, you're, you're minimizing all the whole skill changes.
But your minimizing and mine aren't the same.
Right.
That's the
Are they not? I mean, Kind of agree with Michael there. It's like when I read this, I didn't, I didn't see anybody kind of taking my thoughts and reading that into this. And I don't think that's the way this gets interpreted because I think everybody just assumes you have to have a, a, you have to have a concrete basement here. You know, it's like, why do people assume that?
Is there another way to, to embellish the word minimize?
No, I think the minimize is fine. It's just that, you know, uh, does, does the D R B understand that that what's, that's, that's what that means or or do they think minimizing is, well, you won't, you've only moved like fifty percent of the soil on the site around in order to minimize, you know, the amount of
The question that I
On the slope.
The question I put back to you is the, the, the D R B's job or administrative officer's job, if it's um, not going to the D R B, is to look at implementing the entire regulations. If there's a regulation that says that you can have I don't know, ten dwelling units per acre and it's in an area of a steep slope. The, the, the or one unit an acre and it's a steep slope, then I think, you know, if it's one unit an acre, it's minimize and avoid. If it's ten units an acre, it's going to be very difficult to not impact that if it's all steep slope. So it's not, if you have, one doesn't take supremacy over another necessarily because it doesn't prohibit, it just says minimize impact. So it's minimize within the context of what else is permitted. If the commission want, would want to give more specific guidance to say that you know, minimize means, you know, you, you are limited in the amount of development that you can do, not just from the design of it, then that's maybe something that should use enhancement.
I think that should be in there because some sites you just can't be, it can't be in as intensely developed as they're being developed, you know, and there's some sites that you can develop very intensely, but a steep wooded site is probably not one. And I think the example of off of, of Spear Street, you know, when U V M wanted to develop that. And I was thinking, how could you develop that in an environmentally appropriate way? And I thought you'd have to put a tower up and not allow any parking on that site. You know, that's the only way you could do that in an environmentally appropriate way. You know, and that obviously wouldn't be allowed because we're not allowed to build towers. But, you know, it's just like, that's a really good example of, you know, if you, if you took that site and said, how could you do something that wouldn't be in a, you know, environmental abomination? You know, and you gave it to a developer and then you gave it to somebody who was really, really astute. You know, with environmental design, they'd come up with two completely different proposals, I think. You know, and that's the problem. I mean, you know, we have one developer that comes in with their idea and then you have to say yea or nay. And it's like, it's like, wow, okay, um. Are they, are they, you know, are we allowing them to do what really is the environmentally correct solution? Is we've gotten so many restrictions on that site that the one obvious one they're not allowed to do. Is they they have to build no higher than what thirty-five feet or something. Makes it very hard.
I guess what I'm. Aiming at is to not change the the nature of the land. Of a steep slope or a very steep slope, but a steep slope. Which would. Or somebody to think more more deeply and more cleverly about how to develop it without. Destroying the natural features of of this piece of land and maybe maybe we should move on and I would ask. Paul and Kelsey to figure out. Some language which would achieve the my objective, which is not to change the nature or destroy the nature of a steep slope parcel. If prohibition isn't gonna fly here, I didn't get anybody say yes, they supported that idea.
I I guess I would want to take direction from the commission as a whole.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's definitely not currently on the work plan to have them researching steep slope alternatives. So I guess. I'm not sure, I guess.
But just is that a reason not to do something?
No, I'm not, I'm saying that we would need to like decide as a group, we wanna.
That's what I'm asking, now the rest of you can weigh in.
I mean, we can always change what our work is.
Yeah, my feeling is that the start that there should should be allowed to develop on steep slopes, assuming that there's not erosion. So, but I appreciate what Michael's saying and Donna. And I'm sort of caught in between because I hadn't thought about some of the other possibilities. That, you know, how can you build but still respect? The aspects of that. Of that location and and.
I think it can be done.
Yeah, I I don't have the words, you know, that's the difficulty.
I'm wondering if it could be a simple fix, like in B, we already say. Develop must be designed to avoid undue adverse effects on steep slopes. It says like undue adverse effects on the natural features. Of the steep slopes, something to that effect, that that might get at it.
I I think, Michael, the intent of what you are looking for is in there, the language just isn't the way you want. Needs to be tweaked a little bit. Yeah, I I I think that the intent is we don't want somebody to just completely. You know, devastate and change the slopes, we do allow development on there, but we would like the character retained, I think that that's in there, I don't know. If you tweak the language, I think the intent is in there.
Yes, there's something maybe, I mean, it'd be nice to just be able to move on from this and not have some additional hanging out there work item, so I guess there.
Did you make a note of what Andrew just said?
Yeah, the.
On the B.
Like, would that work? Or Kelsey, do you think to?
This a little bit on the fly, I guess if you wanted to go in that direction, I would also suggest that. Something in A needs to change because the purpose statement is really about stability. It's not about keeping a natural condition. So this is, you know, we we've looked really closely in the in the handful of. Circumstances where people have asked us about it too, what is the purpose of this regulation and the purpose, everything in there speaks to. Instability, not necessarily, I hate to disagree with you Duncan, but I I think at least in the purpose statement, it doesn't say retain a natural condition. As a reason to be doing it, they're the.
But item two implies that we are thinking about the design.
Well, I mean, when you look at, I mean, very just under twelve oh three, steep slopes, A, purpose. You know, one, prevent erosion and avoid stream sedimentation that may cause undue adverse effects on water quality. That's what you do, you know, that's that's the whole reason that you don't dig up a slope site and remove the vegetation from it. You know, so it I think it's very much in the character of this section to retain. And I was gonna suggest and maybe an easy way to just add a language is. On that steep slope standards under C, clearing of vegetation, excavation and filling of steep slopes shall be minimized. To retain the character of the sloped site. I mean, it, you know, it kind of simply says, don't change the character of the site. You know, when, you know, of the of the slope and the vegetation.
Yeah, because I I think the whole point that we want to make sure we're adding is that we don't want just wholesale bulldoze bulldozing of the whole thing. You know, or removing vegetation in an area where. You know, it's not completely necessary, but. But if someone wants a driveway or like a well-designed building, that seems reasonable.
Can I can I make a quick suggestion, is it possible that condensing B and C together by including the word? By saying, including, all development must be designed to avoid undue adverse effects on steep slopes. Being the noun, including. Clearing of educate, clearing of vegetation, excavation and filling, period. That would define those three things as undue adverse effects.
I think we, I think. As some amount of those things might be necessary, like say you need you had a.
The undo word would still be mod would still be the modifier, so the it would define the adverse effects as. The clearing of vegetation, excavation and filling, period. With the undo still being that that bit of wiggle room for reasonableness.
That works for me.
Okay, yeah, so it uses the words undue adverse effects instead of the word minimize as the.
Yes, it puts it, yeah, it puts the analysis that the DRB does on the word undue instead of on minimized.
And eliminate C, just combine.
Yeah, it seems very reasonable, does that seem reasonable? Okay, great, okay, anything else on this? Okay, if that's the case, then maybe with are we comfortable with the modification of warning the? Public hearing?
Did you say is there anything else on on this?
On agenda item, yes.
I do have some questions on the exemptions of under twelve.
Removal of earth products, what?
We talk about environmental restor, oops, we're talking about environmental restoration projects. And I'm I'm wondering, how would we know? That a restoration project is actually good for the environment? And and or well-designed, that that question applies to. Item F, two, three and four.
Yeah, where are you?
Page.
It's page thirty-nine of the packet.
Oh, oh, yeah, environmental restoration project, this was something that we. Talked about a bunch, didn't we? Didn't we define these? I think it's in the definitions, maybe.
Environmental restoration projects is a defined term in the. Article two definitions, shoreline restoration is not defined, which is why that section is a bit longer.
So the item two is defined?
And the phrase environmental restoration project is defined with about a paragraph long definition in article two.
Uh, so it it is means a project authorized under a MS four general permit. TS four general permit or municipal roads general permit that addresses a primary pollution source. Identified in the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation approved watershed implementation plan, so it's really. A municipal or state project to restore a stormwater condition is is it's pretty narrowly defined. And so, you know, it's A being designed by our own stormwater department and it's being reviewed by our. But by under these regulations, so.
I do know that shoreline restoration is also uh comes under the purview of the A and R. Okay.
Okay, anything else? I think if people are comfortable, there is a draft motion in the memo.
Well, I my my question is how will we get back to the other concerns that I have or the other? Ideas that I have to improve what we have. By aligning the wetlands. In city center commercial with residential from fifty to a hundred feet. That's in class two wetlands. Same and and I guess class one as well, but we don't have any, so I won't. But what I said was while we're contemplating amendments here. Could we not try to align the city center form-based code district with the other zones and make them? Make class two buffers a hundred feet in both in all zones.
We decided not to do that.
When?
Uh, when we approved article twelve.
I I know that Duncan, but nothing's carved in stone, you know, the world changes and we could, if we have enough, I'm. I'm not, I'm not debating it with with. Any of you, I'm I'm suggesting that when we have an opportunity to. Improve our envi- environmental protection standards, shouldn't we take advantage of that? And and get it get it on our list to do or get it done. I don't think we can get it done tonight, but I'd like us to consider it. With, you know, there are lots of, we we've done lots of things in the past that. That we changed when we rewrote the rules for the over those three years of pretty tough work.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, we can make a change just because we did something one way at one point, doesn't mean we're stuck with it. You know, I think with city center, there was like a lot of discussion about how. That was kind of the balance for having less development in other places in our city, like. The city center was an area where we had. As as a city and in our comprehensive plan and over thirty years of contemplating having development in city center. You know, we'd kind of affirmed over and over as a community that that's where we want development to happen, so. You know, I think as as a commission, you know, we kind of wrestled with that and and kind of felt like. Let's do the best we can for wetlands and other things in other areas, but you know, this is kind of the balance of like, where are we gonna have people live? Where are we gonna have our businesses? I mean, I think that that was the that was the discussion, it was kind of a. Like a policy decision, it wasn't because we don't like wetlands and city center, it was.
No, I agree, uh, with city center is where we want, we want dense. Development and so I'm I'm okay, but what why commercial industrial and airport? Are lumped in there. City center form-based code district is quite different, so. The other, the other. The commercial, industrial and airport districts. We could change, make them align with residential.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was at the time, at least part of that same discussion of like policy, where where do we want? People, businesses, and those were kind of the zones that we picked out as the spots for focus and.
So you said, yeah, I'm 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 I I would agree with you, but I don't see why we should carve out the. The others for an environmentally very sound idea.
This question, do we do we move this on? Do we wait until we resolve my question?
I'm not, I don't think I'm asking for us to delay moving this on, I'm asking for us to. Agree that we will look at. What I'm suggesting, which is to align the wetland buffers. On industrial, commercial and airport districts with residential districts at a late at the. At the next opportunity we have. I don't want to delay what we've done tonight.
Re-look at that, move this on.
Wish, go ahead, yeah.
Move to warn a public hearing on LDR twenty-two dash oh nine for Tuesday, January tenth. Seven P M is presented in this meeting packet and approve the accompanying planning commission report.
Okay, um, any discussion on the motion?
Will it incorporate the change that we've discussed?
The changes that Kelsey suggested.
I have the changes as changing the exemption to the lot line, the couple of grammatical changes and the. Combining of two B and C as discussed.
Okay.
I I amend the motion to reflect. The information presented in the meeting packet subject to the changes just articulated.
Great.
Agreed.
Okay, and great, any other discussion?
So what what was, what were you meaning to?
To what was discussed, okay, yeah.
Just making sure the motion officially included the changes. Okay, all in favor? Hi? That, Paul? I missed Paul. That was I, okay, great, that was unanimous, very good. Then we can move on to item six, which is the unified planning work program requests.
Okay. So, as you know, each year, the city is invited to submit requests to the regional planning commission. For. Planning projects of the next year principally in the area of transportation, because that's where they get their federal funding from. This year, we worked closely with our new deputy director of capital projects. As well as public works director and took input from the bike ped committee. As I said in the memo, we have a number of projects that have been analyzed and scoped in recent years and so. A lot of our staff effort is to move those towards implementation because we've got sort of a backlog of things we've studied that we haven't physically constructed yet. So there's really one big project that we're proposing in here, which is to do a bike ped master plan for the city, it's something that the. Bike ped committee has been asking about for a while. Donna, you can probably speak to that, not to put you on the spot, but you did say you've been on the committee for fifteen years, so I may just put you on the spot. The, uh, so that's really the one big one and then. There's a sort of backup as I described that we are looking to update our city center. Analysis about when the triggers for when a traffic signal might be needed and things like that, we think. That we're gonna be able to do that as a mid-year budget adjustment and so not need to put it as a new new request. But as a backup, we might to do that, so that's really the thing that we're submitting, proposing to submit this year and would love to. Donna, if you could maybe take a minute and talk a little bit about what the committee had been talking about and then. You're welcome to provide any feedback, tell us we're totally in the wrong direction, if you like, if you like this direction, any. Components that you'd like us to highlight about things that you want us to be making sure that we include in this, that would be great feedback too.
Yeah, yeah, the bike pad committee last month had a chance to look at Burlington's. Really a master plan, their bicycle master plan and we thought, oh, wow, we've been planning all these routes and everything, but. Wow, we've never done anything like this, you know, really comprehensive, kind of looking at it more as a, you know. A roadmap for, you know, you know, what what a connected system looks like. And I think the thing that bike pads missed for quite a long time because so much of it has been focused on. Shared use paths. Is that for commuter purposes? You really can't ignore on-road infrastructure for bikes. And that's one of the things that Burlington has done a really good job with because they haven't been able to build. A lot of shared use paths, they have. They have, they have the one, and you know, that's it. Whereas we have a lot of interconnected ones that can be used by commuters, but. Um, there's some some places you just can't get around getting on a road. Um, and that's where we're really, really lacking in on-road infrastructure for bikes. Um, for commuters and you know, people in and people in South Burlington are just. I mean, there's a lot of people who do commute by bicycle, not this time of year necessarily, but you know, in less inclement weather. And um, so I think that looking at. I think it would also be good to include um uh employers who have incentives. Um, or who could have incentives or who might do incentives um for for people to use. Um, um more public transit, I know U V M and the hospital do. And um. You know, include that in the master plan as well, like, you know, where where are the where are the major? Major routes that are are really used on a daily basis by commuters. And make sure make sure that that's included, because we haven't, we have never done anything like that.
No, I think and the use of e-bikes is going to maybe exponentially increase the amount of commuting by bike.
Yeah, did you see my article?
Did see your.
You know, it's like. So it's a little bit of a, but.
I hope that bike didn't get stolen.
Oh, no, it's it's actually, it's actually in my living room at the moment.
Good, outside, he will be there.
Oh, Andrew.
So um, let's get back from a trip to London and. It's amazing how many people commute on bikes even in cold weather. And what was really impressive, the the building that my office was in had an entire floor. Dedicated to bikes, room for two hundred bikes and locker and changing facilities. And that facility is really what allows everyone in that building to commute. Bye bye, you know, build it and they will come. And it it was really something, and I'm just wondering whether or not. Something like that should or could be in this master plan, because you can have all the bike paths in the world, but. If when you get to where you're going, you're you're drenched or you're sweaty or you're not gonna take your bike, right?
And you need a place to keep your bike safe.
I think the employers, the employers do have to be a piece of this, and it would be great for the school district to kind of, you know. Get involved in this as well, because you know, a lot, a lot more people are commuting. Less distances to school, i.e. the students, I don't know about the employees, they may, they may go be going some distance, but um. You know, it's like. Of all the, you know, there's a lot of big employers in the city. Uh, and and um, like I said, U V M and and U V M C are. Are are already pretty good at um incentivizing biking, but. Um, we heard about National Life in Vermont and um in Montpelier and some of the programs that they do um. And uh, so I I I think it would be great to involve employers in a master plan.
Yeah, I I guess I'm thinking more specifically to, you know, review, say, the existing facilities and. Determine whether changes should be made to the L D Rs to encourage better facilities, so that so you know, incorporate something like that in in the plan.
Um, there is something in there now.
In.
Yeah, L E Rs do include.
Oh, no.
Some facilities.
While we have experts working in the community, maybe they can make suggestions is what you're.
Uh, I I think that's a great idea, and the uh only thing I'd ask for a little bit of liberty to look at is um, we're also, as Donna and. Actually, Andrew, you're on the uh advisory group for the climate action, transportation, implementation. That might live there as as where to get the expertise in in inside that work, because it's. That is how to achieve the two and a half percent reduction in vehicle miles traveled. So the solutions, I agree, I agree with what you're saying, it might live. Uh, let us think about whether it lives better in the master plan or better as part of that already existing project, but.
Um, that was a great summary, thank you, Donna, and I think it actually came up at our our last meeting that this was on on the plan, and we were all kind of. Pretty excited about the idea of a bike ped master plan.
And the one that I failed to mention um was uh inventory of ADA compliant structures, so under ADA, we are. Um, required to have a ADA transition plan. Uh, some of that we can do in-house, but we thought that it's something that we could uh have the R P C help us to do the inventory part of that, so. Uh, are the signals, you know, do they have the what the buttons, does it have the bumpy surfaces at each of the intersections? That kind of inventory work would be great to have some help with, so. Yeah.
Okay, do you need um a motion for us to kind of approve or push these forward?
You are comfortable with it, um, that would be great, because then it would be off your plate for January, and we can get it straight to council.
Uh, just a question for Paul, where does the roundabout uh Swift Spear Street roundabout reside? I mean, I know it's not a new project, so it won't be here, but.
Sure, so uh the first level review was completed last year. Um, we had the choices to whether to. Frankly, study it a little bit further or or to uh. Um, identify as a proper as a project to find funding for, and we made the strategic decision of. Studying without any money behind it, just results in having to study it again in five years when we have the funding. So really where we're at at the um now is uh identifying. Uh, as I said, we have a new director, deputy director of capital projects, identifying the. The 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 priority projects to put funding towards and once there's funding identified, then moving it forward to the next stage. Um, so that's, that's a very non-answer answer, except to say that. We don't want to study it more without having money to actually build the thing is the is the.
Well, the study was very, very comprehensive and very impressive, I must say.
So just on the same vein, and maybe it's the same answer, the the Dorset Street lighting project, because you drive on Dorset Street. So you just sing a light and the, I mean, it's just crazy, right, particularly.
Isn't it, that's supposed to be done, right?
The traffic signals?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Sick.
So this year, the 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 council just approved uh a big project to. Replace all of the hardware, um install uh a mast arms instead of the strings across and Kennedy and at. Williston Road. Uh. And to, s- so that will be the big first step in there, there is a potential future step of. Um, then sort of getting the next generation of software that would be what's called adaptive signals, where it can be. Uh, monitoring sort of minute by minute how the traffic is. This will set the conditions up for that, but is not that by itself, this is still a programmed version, but it's a massive enhancement over what we have today.
But I I guess Paul, the question is whether there's like a a a middle ground, because I I remember that discussion at council sounds. Very expensive and very far in the future, but um, could there be a middle ground where, say, on the twenty-four project, you know? Some light study to make some easy improvements, for instance, flashing reds between ten P M and six, you know, something that. It is not going all the way to what you're describing, but that maybe be a significant improvement for some important.
So my understanding is that the updated hardware will allow for programming like that. The choices to how to program it, I'll have to get back to you as to what the process is for that, but the hardware will exist. To be able to program it as we choose to. That's, that's, that's the full depth of my knowledge on the subject, so. But I'm happy to talk with our public works director and get back to you on that.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to move it forward? Right, is that what we?
Yes, please.
Second, second, Michael.
You you made a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, great, um, any, any questions? Okay, all in favor of the U P W P?
Hi, hi.
That was unanimous, very good, um. And we have the Vermont neighborhood development area designation, um which is the area around city center. We have a nice memo in our packet with beautiful map.
Okay, just give me a second here.
Right in my wheelhouse, I love it.
The beautiful map?
Where it is.
Hmm. But you don't live in that area, do you? You just, okay.
No, it's it's the area, the the area north of Williston there, uh which I've been talking about here for a long time, where we. Need to do some clever zoning, clever and courageous zoning, so we can.
Little Singapore.
No, no.
No.
No, it's called Singapore in Vermont.
Okay, what do what do we got here?
All right.
Paul's bringing up a map.
So um, I think I laid most of it out in the memo, but just, I think I laid it out mostly in the memo, but just super briefly, there's a. Um, state of Vermont has some tools in the toolbox to facilitate. Uh, smart infill development. Uh, when the community has demonstrated that has the regulation, regulations in place to make sure that it is pedestrian oriented, smart growth. Uh, and that it is qualifying as mixed income affordable housing, so there's an incentive at the state level too. Basically, you go through the very, the first step of set setting up an a uh. A new town center, which we've had um for many, many years uh now, but ten or twelve years in city center. Then you put the regulations in place, which the form base code qualifies for, and then you're eligible for. All of that area and potentially up to a quarter mile away. Qualifying for these benefits, the city gets certain benefits in terms of grant priority for both planning and implementation grants. And the development community gets benefits uh of limited fees or no act two fifty if. Uh, if it's a qualifying project, meaning it has a certain proportion of affordable housing in it. So the proposal here, and this is a rough map to start with, because this requires us to meet with the state and talk about objectives, but would be to expand. The uh neighborhood development area to the north side of Williston Road. Uh, to match the form base code with one exception and south uh to include the form base code district. The couple of little neighborhoods that exist, Town Square and uh Dorset Commons, and as I described. The uh northern edge of the former city hall property that is a site that the city. Has been working with uh Champlain Housing Trust as being a possible area to, there's a little. Patch of trees um sort of behind the fire station, that could be some additional affordable housing and would be exactly the kind of project that this is intended to simplify the review process for. So we want to get your thoughts on it, the one place that it that differs between what's on the map here and the um. Form base code is sort of north of the windjammer, there's a pretty large area of. Wetlands and habitat blocks that I did not include in here, because you made the. Uh, determination that the wetland and habitat block standards should apply in those areas, so I didn't want to send. Uh, conflicting messages between what are our policy priorities. Uh, in the future, I think we could potentially be eligible also for sort of behind the Staples Plaza. As being within a quarter mile, but I can't make the straight face argument until we're sort of at the stage where we've got the bridge, the bike pad bridge like really moving forward. Because it specifically says not like an obstacle like a cloverleaf interchange, so I I didn't want to try to, you know. Go in there and say wink wink, trust it, so it's within a quarter mile, I'd like us to be in a really strong position to advocate for this, so.
I have two um really, I guess, broader questions.
Yeah.
I know that when we did the. At least the 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 other designation, the um, the ones more in the middle of the city, right, and.
Yep.
The other one, whatever it was called.
Well, it was first a new town center, and then we put a neighborhood development area on top of it, so it's basically the same area.
I think, was there a size limit at the time, like, do we have to pick either? One blue area or the other blue area, or do we have enough space now to be able to put both in?
So the neighborhood, that sorry, the new town center, which is the, it's it's a two-stage um. Uh, approval process at the state level, the new town center is capped at a hundred and seventy-five acres. So there's actually a couple of little notch outs in this red that I didn't show in this map, because the new town center is a hair smaller than this red. But the neighborhood development area can be the entirety of the new town center plus a quarter mile in any direction.
Okay, okay.
So right now, there's actually a couple of parcels like these couple right here where else french fries are, are technically. Not in the new town center, because we knew they weren't going to get redeveloped, but they are in the. Uh, neighborhood development area, it's super quirky, but um, that's just sort of how the rules work.
So the answer is we can have both blue areas.
Yes.
We're not limited, and then I guess uh the second question is, is, does it make sense to have J C Park? As part of it, because you know, we excluded Dumont Park, and is it sending a weird message about?
The reason that I, so. I want to show that for transparency to you all, um, I wanted to have the conversation with the state in our initial review with them. About whether they, when they say priority grant funding, could J C Park, which is in need of a refresh? Including it, could we make an argument for some state grant funding to help us refresh that park? So that's why it's in, whereas Dumont, we just did. I mean, we could also ask.
Dumont needs to be renamed, right?
Correct, this is the.
City Center Park.
City Center Park, I need to email Google, because this is their, this is their. Description, but yes, that's the reason that I included.
So it's not, um, there's no indication that we would want to like. Develop the park by putting it in the blue like that, that's not.
No, uh, it was specifically, I mean, I can ask them if it's going to send that message, but the intent was, could we? Could we get a priority funding for grand money as calling the park to be part of our important neighborhood features?
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one question, and just. I'm thinking about that north of Wilson Road, are are there are any, I'm just thinking of the property owners, are there un- any unintended consequences of this designation for them, or is it?
This is entirely beneficial to property owners, so uh. If they have a priority housing project, then they can qualify to not have to do act two fifty at all. If they don't, uh, if they don't. Uh, qualify for that, they get a fifty percent reduction in their fees to act two fifty and a cap on their wastewater. Fees, which can be really, really high, so this is entirely to their benefit with no responsibility added, other than. They have to meet all the local rules, the whole, the this thing is set up to really be. Local community demonstrate to us that you have all the rules in place necessary to foster smart development, and if so. We don't need another layer of uh of review, essentially, what this is set up to be.
Donna?
Um, Paul, I, well, I just had a question, because I know in planning, in the past, there had been proposals to have a. Secondary roadway parallel to Williston Road.
Yep.
And it seems like this would really. Um, push that forward, um, because it'd be pretty tough to develop any of that without having another road. Um, parallel to Williston Road, wouldn't it?
Right, so that's, I just popped that onto the map here. This black dashed line is is that planned road.
And how does that mesh with the, because I don't, I I'm not familiar with what's going on at the old Holiday Inn. But it seems like they they're putting a building right up where you'd think a road would be.
They're, they're building the first section of this exactly as shown on this map.
Oh, they are?
Yes, they're building the the straight in and then the right turn over to the windjammer property.
Oh, okay, so does it go between the two buildings that they're building or?
Actually, three buildings at the site there, um, so as you, they're moving the driveway over a hair. As you go in, if you're going north from Dorset Street, there'll be a building right up at the street on your left.
Oh, wow.
And then two essentially right where the Holiday Inn is and to the right of the Holiday Inn. So um, it's a really good case study in how much you can do in a really small property uh there. So yeah, they're they're building this very first section of it, right, as. Slightly drawn differently, it goes, it goes up here, um, but they've been in close coordination with uh windjammer owners.
Looking at this, this area, um. There's potentially a lot of people over the next next number of years, I mean, this may be fifty, hundred years out, but. I would hope, I mean, I, and I think J C Park is. I would hope, I mean, I, and I think JC Park is great to have there, but it's really for the existing population now. Not triple or quadruple or whatever the amount of potential people, and I would hope. You know, maybe at some point the council or whomever would start talking with the school a bit more, because I don't know the future of. Well, I call central schools where my daughters went, but whatever it's called now, Mark Cutter. That, that would be an amazing place to have a park for all of that community. I don't see any other, you know, very much open space anywhere that could be accommodated. Just something deep in our mind of, it'd be really great to. We have a lot of moving parts there. We have the city, I mean, the, the school, but it would have to sell to someone and hopefully the city would be first refusal. If it's never, if it's ever changed, so.
Right, and in the meantime, the uh, the rounds do serve that function. For, you know, I see, I get the benefit of our window gets to, gets to look in that direction. So after school, there's lots of kids using the playground and playing soccer, and they're not necessarily kids at the school there. We're starting to see some kids in the neighborhood, which is great.
Yeah.
Um, so any other questions or, oh, Andrew?
It just understand, I mean, it does seem really beneficial for the areas that are designated. So I just, I guess, just curious about the areas, Paul, that you decided not to designate that perhaps would be in the quarter mile. You know, for instance, the, uh, is that the Queens, I'm not sure what the neighborhood's called, the, that little, well, that one and then went to the, to, to, to the west.
Over here.
Yeah, just, what, what's the thought process around that?
Um. Two, two, two things were going through my head. One, uh, those are both R four districts. Um, so our, our low-density, single-family duplex homes. Uh, no, Dorset Commons is in the blue. Uh, this is, doesn't really have a name. We call it the Brookwood Neighborhood. But um, I don't know that it formally has a name. So that is part of the ongoing discussion that you all are having about what's the future of largely single-family home neighborhoods should be. And we didn't want to be jumping ahead of where the community is, is where you're at. Secondly, I think it's going to be a harder argument um for us to sell to the state. That we have the rules in place to do all the things that, that are required. So our form-based code, we know meets because it, it's already been through that. But you know, we're expected to demonstrate that we're allowing higher densities than what exists already there today. That we are requiring a minimum amount of density. There's a pretty high bar that I don't know that our rules in the R four yet meet. And I didn't want to sort of presume that you're all ready to see those neighborhoods get more intense. Doesn't mean we couldn't go back in a year and add to it, but I was sort of advocating for the, let's hit the slam dunk that we can get now. So that we can um foster more of these projects where we've already made the policy decisions.
Have any idea what the?
Have any idea what the population will be of this area when it's fully built out? Both the pink and the blue?
Yes, uh, but not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, Alana, our uh project director, who's been monitoring the TIF, has been keeping a pretty close eye on that subject. Um, and I'd be happy to report back to you at your next meeting, but I don't have that off the top of my head.
Uh, what's the zoning of, for those lots, um, excuse me, behind the hotel and then along. Uh, along Williston Road, the north part, be- behind all those single level.
Right, so all of this um, uh, along uh, the north side of Williston Road is in the T four. Which is the, the um, same as the south side of Williston Road, with the exception of the park, which is zone park. Uh, on the east side of Heinsberg Road is T three, which is the more like a townhome style. Down here, right along Dorset Street is T four. And then this area here is actually our residential seven district. Um, where uh Dorset Commons is, Town Square is, the pines are. That's going to be a conversation point with the uh, with the state, because that's a different district that we haven't previously had approved. And then this little piece right here where the discussion has been going on between the city and uh Champlain Housing Trust. And that received ARPA funding from the city council is still zone municipal. So if that were to move forward, the planning commission would have to decide to redesignate that to something else.
I'm sorry, T three and T four, what's the density level?
T four is typically four-story build, four, four, five-story buildings uh agnostic to use.
Okay.
T three is typically more townhome scale, like the East End of Market Street here. That's in the T three, those, those.
Okay.
And.
Fairly dense housing.
Fairly dense housing, but at a lower scale.
Yeah.
Essentially, uh, it's intended to be sort of a walk-up appearance more than a building with this, with a couple of entrances appearance.
But we'd have to change, what's north of Wilson, we'd have to change that problem.
Nope, that's, that's already in the T four, north of Williston Road, so that's already qualifying.
Up seven.
Right, right now it allows five, so you could choose to either allow more and keep it as residential. Or you could theoretically turn it to a T five district, but that requires a non-residential first floor, which is a different. Yep, which you have done once, it used, it was originally adopted as four stories and you changed it to five, so you could certainly change it again, and there's, yeah. So I'm not, I don't need a motion on this one, but I was mostly just seeking your feedback um as we start our preliminary conversations. You'll hear more from us.
Great, then we are on to one of my favorite things, street names. So a street name for former Auclaire Farm Road, and this one looks like a good one. I don't know if we can find anything wrong with this one. I know the last one was a little disappointing. Lover's Lane.
Lover's Lane.
Yeah, so Bread and Butter Farm has come in and uh requested the new, a name for the private road um shown in that little drawing I dropped in. It's the corner of Cheese Factory in Heinsberg, um, just south of Cheese Factory. They requested Lover's Lane. Apparently it is what the Auclaire family called that access drive. I cross-checked it with the E nine one one system. There are no nearby Lover's Lanes. I believe there, I, I think if I'm remembering correctly, there are seven or eight others in the state of Vermont. But they're in Brandon and Pittsfield and, and places that are farther away. Yeah, so.
Okay, sounds like Michael made the motion.
Moved to approve love, approve Lover's Lane as the name, Paul.
Okay, Paul, Paul did it.
Paul was quick to it.
Paul, Paul won.
I'll second Paul's motion at high school.
Okay, so Paul made the motion, Michael seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous, very exciting, okay?
The minutes of November ninth and November twenty-ninth.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Michael always has a question on the minutes.
He doesn't pose the questions when you're not sharing though, Jessica. That's how, that's how Duncan gets out quickly.
That's how Duncan moves to the meeting so quick.
Saves them for when you're sharing.
Put a shock collar on his ankle.
You don't know what your comment is, Michael? Okay, like a, like a typo kind of a thing, is that?
I should.
Different.
Is that okay? Are we allowed to um approve them anyway?
If it's a true typo, yes. If it's like a nonsensical typo, yes. If it changes the meaning of the sentence, I would have to bring it back, but. Michael sent it to me and I will let you know.
Yeah, there was, the word head was where the word heat should have been someplace.
Oh, okay.
And I think.
We'll make sure to catch that.
I think it was, I think it was you speaking, Paul.
Paul, what word did you say was?
It should be heat, not head, apparently.
Could be heat, not head.
Okay, okay, that's a good one.
Can I talk a little other business while Michael's looking for his meeting notes? Um, I, we didn't make a great plan about who was going to write what for the other paper. We just made a general statement that we would do the article. Does anyone have any interest in writing an article for the other paper on our behalf or has a topic? They'd really like to suggest we take on, and I bring this up because um Donna has done one um already. So she's beating us and now she's working number two, so we don't want to stick her with ours. Uh, our, now that she's also joined our group, so.
I think it'd be a great idea.
Donna just says all of them. So just spread it around, anyone else, or is this something I need to take on or?
Should we do one on the commercial seller?
Commercial store? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we're looking at it, yeah, that'd be great, a nice informational article. That sounds super good.
And didn't Paul say he keep, oh, were you going to, or had something that you were going to put in there?
You didn't read it? I've wrote, it was published like. Two, two or three weeks ago. A lot of effort into that, Ted. It was all about the climate action plan. That's okay.
Does anyone know what, is it like five hundred words or how long since?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven fifty.
And I will um let MJ know that that'll be one of ours and what we can do. And I'll tell her that we'll plan at least to one more comprehensive plan focused also. So, great, thanks. Okay, Michael, did you find your minutes item?
I'll send it in if, when I find it.
Can I, can I just ask?
Yes.
Just very quickly, um, just in the minutes, um, I don't come in person to all the meetings, but I typically. Um, listen in, and as the council liaison, um, I probably ought to be included in the attendance in that role. And this is probably more for whomever takes the minutes.
That is a great idea, Helen, it's important.
Thank you.
We'll make sure to correct that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Helen.
Um, do you need us to hold up one or both of them?
No.
So we can go on and approve them?
Yep.
Okay, so Ted uh made the motion. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay, then um, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye? Any abstain?
I don't think I can vote because I wasn't there.
Um, you're allowed to vote even if you weren't there, if you feel comfortable, but you can also, okay. Minutes.
It's an opinion.
Then it turns out we are not only unanimous, we are complimentary as well. Good job. Good job, Sue. That's, that's the answer, so we are, um, any other, other business, other, other business? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you, and thank you, Helen, for the cookies and Ted.
That's any man.
You're very welcome. I appreciate all you do for our city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't you thinking of me?
Great.
So our next meeting is. January tenth, so uh don't, I mean, welcome to come on the twenty-seventh, but you'll be going to the library. So, thank you, everyone, uh, you know, a, a turn of a calendar year is just a turn of a calendar year. But this has been a year of exceptional work from all of you, and we really, really, really appreciate it. And um, we hope to see you sort of in and around, maybe at Illuminate Vermont, but if we don't, um, happy holidays and happy new year. And we got some really exciting stuff next year coming up.
You say that every year.
Ted's still waiting.
Oh, thank you for your.
Yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
We're doing this some more, some more thing.